I pledge allegiance, raise your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor Corm is present for the city council's successor agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
All right, for members of the public, for public comment, you may listen and make oral public comments telephonically by dialing for the open session 888-251-2949, or 215-861-0694. The access code is 926-0612, pound, wait three seconds, and press pound again. Operator, are there any callers?
And just a reminder to our callers to press pound two if you wish to enter the queue. All right, we do have a caller in the queue.
Go ahead, caller.
Hello, my name is Nancy Hannah. I am, I work with Better Neighbors L.A. We're a coalition of Southern California hosts, tenants, advocates, hotel workers, and community members. And I'm calling in to comment on council initiative number one about adopting an interim moratorium on the establishment of short-term rentals in the city of Los Angeles, in the city of Inglewood. Better Neighbors L.A. believes that home sharing must be regulated to be sustainable. Regulations must ensure housing continues to be available to long-term residents and protect affordable rent-controlled housing from being used as dedicated short-term rental units. The Inglewood Planning Department first recommended the city of Inglewood prohibit unhosed short-term rentals in 2018. This recommendation was to protect housing and residents' safety. Since then, Inglewood has changed its proposed ordinance to not only allow unhosed short-term rentals, but also allow for vacation rentals to take housing off the market completely. This is a step in the wrong direction. Unhosted short-term rentals, including vacation rentals, are the most likely to take housing off the market and be turned into dedicated tourist housing, accelerating gentrification and raising rents for all. Unhosted short-term rentals are often used as party houses. They cause noise disturbances, create trash, monopolize parking, and, as sadly illustrated this past weekend, unhosed short-term rentals pose a threat to public safety. The city of Inglewood should require all short-term rentals to be a primary residence. All short-term rentals must have a host on-site throughout the rental to ensure that guests are supervised. The city of Inglewood should prohibit all short-term rentals in any rent-controlled housing unit to ensure affordable housing is used for tenants and not tourists. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. Operator, are there any other callers?
We do not have any callers in the queue at this time.
Mayor, we did have a public comment regarding the initiative, and we did pass that out from Marvin McCoy. It was passed out to all council members.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, then, with that, we'll close public comment. Item, just one second. Item one, CSA two and H one.
Want register.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye.
Consent calendar. Items two through four.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
D R one.
Staff report recommending approval of amendment six to agreement number nineteen dash one-five-five with NOSIMIN LLP increasing the blended rate from $485 per hour to $545 per hour.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
A one and CSA three.
Thank you, Mayor. As to A one, there was two, three closed session items, CSA one and CSA dash one. As to that, there was a discussion held and direction given to staff regarding the real property negotiation. CS two is the closed session regarding Kenyatta Taylor Field et al. versus the city of Inglewood. As to that matter, the status on the case is provided to the city council and direction given to staff. The final item was CS three, which was Bertha Carmen Aceves versus Casa de la Cafe Bakery. As to that, a status report on the matter was given to the council and direction given to staff. And as to A two, there's no oral reports from the city attorney's office.
I think you're gonna have to pull your mics close to your mouth. Okay, CM one.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no oral reports from the city manager's office.
CC one.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First, I would like to thank the residents for participating in the redistricting workshop that was held this Saturday, this past Saturday, I'm sorry, January the twenty-ninth. I want to thank Ms. Elsa Moreno and the G I S department for her contribution to our workshop. She was great. Also, would like to give a big shout-out and thanks to our I C, I T C department, and Thomas Bun, and the media team for providing excellent service that day as well. Also, Mayor, today's marks Black History Month, and so we want to pay homage to those that have paved the way for us this month. And also, Mayor, or lastly, I would like to congratulate our Rams on winning the NFC West championship and making it to the Super Bowl, Super Bowl fifty-six. Let's go Rams. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I like that. I like that, so.
It's Love Month as well, Mayor, so we'll be wearing pink this whole month.
All right.
Okay.
When will you be starting?
I have it on my feet.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay.
CI one.
Initiative by Mayor James T. Butts Jr. requesting that the city council enact an uncodified interim ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of further short-term rental use in the city of Inglewood, the prohibition of party houses, and the establishment of requirements for host platforms to immediately remit transit occupant tax, taxes to the city for all short-term rentals operated in the city as of January one, twenty twenty-two.
Now, how are we gonna go about this? Do, do we want to make the following findings first, Mr. City Attorney, or should we move to make the motion away further here? Reading.
Thank you. Yes, you should make the findings first.
As for, do we read them out, or how do you want to do it?
You can read them out, or take them as provided into the staff report and the ordinance.
Yeah, then I will move to accept as findings, item one, A, B, and C.
Second.
Before we take the vote, is there anyone that wants to make a comment? I would like to. All right. Councilman Morales. Thank you. And first of all, Mayor, thank you for putting this on the, on the agenda. We all know of the tragedy here within our city that happened at a short-term rental. We've all also been working on our own in regards to how we're gonna deal with short-term rentals in the long run. As we all know, having a temporary moratorium imposed gives us the opportunity to freeze and really think about how we want to address this in the long term for the safety of our residents, but also for the happiness of our residents and the best use of, of any property that is deemed worthy of, of being a short-term rental. But at this point, knowing that we have a big event coming, knowing that we have a, a significant number of events coming here in the near future, I agree a hundred percent that the responsible thing to do is to take this pause and establish the fact that, that we look into this short-term rental ordinance and do the right thing for everyone. So Mayor, again, thank you. I just wanted to say that because I've been getting some calls in regards to this, and I wanted to establish my opinion now. Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
Mayor.
Councilman Padilla.
Great, thank you. And again, I just want the public to know, and anybody listening, I know the young lady that spoke and called in earlier, this is something that we have, folks have been approaching us on for, for a long time. And so, this is not something that's just an overnight decision that we're just, you know, flying up, off the cuff. This is something that certainly has been thought out, really has been discussed in, in our own discussions with whoever we want to talk to, whether it's the public or anybody else. And so, you know, this is important for our community to have something, at least right now, you know, so that we can also do some more assessments as, as we move forward. As we know, this city is growing, it's, it's moving quickly. And so, I just want to thank the mayor, and again, staff, for working to put this together. It's a lot of work, but we did it, and it's done, and so I appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to, Councilman Dotson.
Mayor, for this, because I've been getting so many phone calls about this situation you just don't know. And I am so grateful for the staff and the mayor for putting this on our docket. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I, Mayor, if you don't mind, I also want to echo the sentiments of, of you all. It was very unfortunate what happened. This is a timely matter that, you know, I think that we need to, to handle. And I want to thank the mayor for initiating this, and it is, it's time for us to be, take a pause, like Councilmember Morales said, and get this straightened out so that we can work for the best benefits of our residents. At the end of the day, that's who we are working for, and so we need to take this pause and make sure that we get this right this time. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, and I'd just like to say, you know, there was a time when no one would have ever imagined that people would want to do short-term rentals in the city of Inglewood. And then, as we have evolved as a community, as we have evolved socially, we have people that want to live here that would never have considered Inglewood a housing option. We have people that want to recreate here because of all the things that are available. Now, we want our residents to be able to benefit for sticking with us during this time, and they should be able to use their homes as short-term rentals. But what should not happen, should not happen, is there should not be party houses. There should not be party houses. There should not be a proliferation of short-term rentals that are enacted by LLCs that buy residential units and use them strictly as an economic benefit. And the incident that happened Sunday before last, where four people lost their lives to a short-term rental that was rented out for a party, the renters were people from this county with gang affiliations. And there was an ambush, obviously. They discovered who was gonna be there from social media, and so the city has no idea what's going on. The owner of the property is not resident on the property, and so we intend, after this vote, to enact a very strict short-term rental ordinance that will be developed during this moratorium. And we intend for what happened Sunday before last to never happen here again. It's a responsibility of the city council to have regulations for the uses of property. They could have a detrimental impact on neighborhood integrity, meaning the ability for people to enjoy the homes that they've lived in for so long and paid for for so long. And it's our responsibility to ensure there is a level of safety involved. And that's why I asked the housing protection people and the coordinator of the short-term rental division to work with me in putting together the staff report. They'll be working with the city attorney's office to come up with a comprehensive ordinance that will regulate and control this use. And so I want to thank the council for their comments. And with that, Madam City Clerk, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Mayor, would you like to introduce and move for adoption? I would, I would like to introduce and, and move it for adoption.
We, we need a motion to wait further reading.
I made that motion before. But we'll do it again. Motion wait for reading, I'll second.
Okay.
Excuse me. We, we did, what did we just vote for?
So what you voted on was the findings, A, B, and C.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Morales has moved to wait further reading, I'll second.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on the motion wait?
Yes, sir, okay. Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
And move adoption. And introduce and move adoption.
Okay, Mayor. Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
CSA four.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on December seventh, twenty twenty-one, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor agency members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
Well, adjourn the successor agency, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on December seventh, twenty twenty-one, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
H three.
Staff report recommending approval of the revised California Tax Credit Allocation Committee lease rider agreement by and among Inglewood Housing Authority, Pacific Rim Preservation LP, and the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee for Pacific Rim Apartments located at two-three-zero South Revilla Avenue, Inglewood, California, nine-zero-three-zero-one.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
We'll adjourn the housing authority, F one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Finance authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
We'll adjourn the parking authority, J P A one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye.
We'll adjourn the finance authority and the J P A. Now, we're on to public comments, as there are no appointments to board the commission. Oh, there is an appointment. You were like keeping it secret, man, you made me look bad. I didn't want it to lose, you'd lose it right there in your organization. I'm on you. Councilman, Councilmember Eli Morales nominates, and I appoint Alex Munge to the Housing Authority Commission. I move concurrence.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Now, public comment, persons wishing to address the council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered may do so at this time. Operator, are there any callers?
And just a reminder to your audience, do press pound two if you wish to make a comment. I do not see any comments in the queue at this time.
Mayor, we did have comments come through via email, and so those have been passed out to our mayor and council from Susan Jensen.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
With that, there's no further comment, operator?
We do have a hand raised in the queue now.
All right, go ahead.
I call your lines unmuted, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to make a comment about the incident that did occur, like we're talking about, maybe two weeks ago, with the shooting and everything. It was an unfortunate situation, and I don't know, maybe for comment, you know, maybe, I know you have the Inglewood police, maybe they can, you know, patrol on the different streets that they feel that are, that have short-term rentals, you know, to make sure that they're not having parties and, you know, they're not, you know, gang affiliated, and that they're not, not going by the rules of the short-term rental. So if they do see that occurring, then, you know, they can call for backup, and then they can tell the people, okay, everybody has to, you know, leave the premises, you know, immediately because you can't use these short-term rentals, you know, for parties because we want to make sure our neighborhood is safe, you know, for our community, for our children, especially, you know, the stadium is built, the farm is there, you have people coming in out of town that are gonna be going to the games and concerts, and we want to make sure our neighbors and community is safe, as well as people traveling to our community to enjoy these functions.
Thank you so much. Operator, are there any other callers?
I do not see any additional comments in the queue at this time.
Okay, with that, we will close public comments. Are there any council comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like I'm just repeating what our city clerk had to say, but it's, it's very important that we understand Black History Month starts today, and we need to learn more about that history so that that is American history. You know, things that were done here in America by African-American people should be part of American history. So take the time to see what you can find out about some particular hero and continue as going on. I also want to make an announcement that we're doing our shredding event February nineteenth, nine to twelve, at twenty-nine oh one Manchester Boulevard. We received a lot of calls about this, so now I have committed, we're gonna do it, and we're gonna do it Saturday, February nineteenth. That's really at the I C O P Center. So the other thing I want to say is, how about them Rams? And I wish them all the success in the Super Bowl. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, the young lady that just called talked about the police department patrolling. Our police department patrols are out there, I see them all the time, they, they, they work hard, they're, we're asking them to do so much with, you know, you know, with whatever they can, and then right now, in preparation of the Super Bowl, they're, they're really, you know, working hard. They were out there in force this past Sunday at the Rams game, and, you know, working with other local agencies to, to support our public safety efforts. And so, you know, kudos to our Inglewood Police Department and the rest of city staff that is out there all the time, I mean, working together to make sure that our community continues to be safe. And so I want to touch on the Super Bowl. So, you know, it's, it's humongous, right? Everybody around the world is gonna be watching the game and, and knowing that it's here in our community in Inglewood, and so, you know, we are, you know, working with all our local, state, and federal partners to ensure we have a safe event. That being said, we count on the public. See something, say something. If it doesn't look right, call the police department so that we can go out there, they can go out there and take a look at it. There's nothing wrong with that, right? The more eyes that we have on target, the better off we're gonna be to address any situations that may come up. So it doesn't just rest on the shoulders of our police department. Every, not only resident, but if you're out there visiting the city of Inglewood and you see something, say something, right? We all have a vested interest to ensure that all the folks visiting from everywhere, they have fun. And I want to thank some of our restaurants that have stepped up, and they prepared, and they've got some delicious food at different eateries here in the city of Inglewood. You don't have to go outside the city. We got it all right here in Inglewood. We got shopping that folks can come and do here in Inglewood, you know, and guess what? There's gonna be traffic, hello? It's a huge event, right? Eighty thousand plus folks showing up, you know, to the city of Inglewood, and I tell folks, come to Inglewood, spend your money, man, I mean, come on, right? Buy whatever you want to buy, go visit all our restaurants, let's, you know, improve our, our economic situation and let everybody benefit from this. And so plan accordingly. If you're coming to the game, or if you're gonna be out and about on Super Bowl Sunday, know there's gonna be traffic. Take advantage of our public transportation system, carpool, do all that stuff. And one more thing, Mayor, just thirty seconds.
Absolutely.
The Settinella Project, talk about planning in advance. So I've got the Settinella Project, thank you to Public Works, the city manager, everybody that, that helped us get this thing going. There's gonna be some inconveniences because we're out there improving Settinella from Los Angeles all the way to Florence, and so just know that we're working on it. I hear your concerns about the sidewalks are being torn out, traffic is being diverted, or this, you know, this is a, a project, it's gonna take several months, and so bear with us so that, you know, we can continue to improve Inglewood. If you want to know more about this project, and you want to get on my newsletter, because I put information on my newsletter, you can call my office at three-one-zero-four-one-two-eight-six-zero-one, and/or you can send me an email at apadilla@cityofinglewood.org. And just so you know, any city employee, just put their first letter and their last name at cityofinglewood.org. All right, with that, go Rams.
Go Rams. That was two minutes and thirty five.
Thanks, Mayor.
That was all jammed. Wake 'em up. Council one, Falk. District four.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm like everybody else, so super excited that our Rams are gonna be in the Super Bowl, whose house, Rams' house. I'm very excited about it, and this is just a historic time for our city. I mean, who would ever thought Super Bowl would be here in Inglewood? That's just amazing. So with that, I just want to just put that warning out there with our District Four residents, there will be traffic, just expect it, kind of like Councilman Padilla said, just know that there's gonna be a lot going on. We have Taste of Inglewood happening the few days right before Super Bowl in downtown Inglewood, it's gonna be a lot going on. I want everybody to just pay attention to probably all of our social media, but also you can get up-to-date information by going to city of Inglewood website, clicking on How Do I on the top right- clicking on "How Do I?" on the top right-hand corner, and then, you wanna click on the alerts, "Notify Me." And you will be able to get notified of anything happening, any traffic jams, street closures. So, we wanna make this a great event for the city of Inglewood, but we also wanted to not be painful for our residents. So, for more information, go to my webpage. I will have some information up for everybody to get signed in to notify me so that they can get up-to-date information. But we're gonna have a great time the week of Super Bowl, looking forward to it. And one more thing I just want to acknowledge before I'm done is that our Assembly member, Autumn Burke, has issued her resignation effective today. And I just wanted to take this time to acknowledge her commitment and dedication to the 62nd District. I was with her from her very first election, 2014. That's that middle picture to the very left. That's when she was first, her first day at the Assembly. We, a group of us went up to celebrate her, and she did swear me in right here when I took my seat for the City of Inglewood, City Council, District 4. We will miss her. She's been a great Assembly member, and she's done great work. She's been a great Assembly member. We will miss her. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, before I go to Councilwoman Morales, I have to note that Councilman Padilla has been such a bad influence on all the council people with these pictures. I mean, everybody's got pictures, not with me. Everybody. And you, me and you, we don't have any pictures.
I'm gonna draw one right now.
Councilman Morales, District 3.
I think it's great, and congratulations to Assemblywoman Burke, who's been great for all of us. You know, a little more of the same. The, the congratulations, Ram, it just feels good to be part of something that the city has seen so many positive images about on TV. I know everybody's excited. Every employee in here that played a role should be, you know, should feel a part of it. It's amazing how, you know, our, our Planning Department, our city manager, our, our Public Works, everybody who did their part, we're not used to building stadiums, but they made it happen, and that should be commended. Equally, you know, the, the city has grown exponentially in so many ways, and yet, our police department has not grown, but they've handled everything. So, more of what Alex said, it's amazing to me when there is all this going on in the city on any given Sunday, and you could still call them and get a response. I've seen it. It's happened in the neighborhood, and they should be commended. So, part of it is just kind of understanding, I guess, how it works. And these two gentlemen, of course, know how it works. But it's also, you know, the fact that we have such experienced leadership over at the department that can just absorb all this extra stuff and just identify what needs to be done. So, that being said, I just want to thank everyone for, for their role in that. I did wanna mention, I know Councilman Dodson mentioned Black History Month, and it's amazing, you know, I, since I grew up here in Inglewood, you know, I thought everybody had classes that heard about Black History Month and classes, heard about Martin Luther King during their days, but not everybody did. And, you know, I can tell you that that's why I think it's so important that these months are recognized, you know? So, that being said, an important city in an important month, having an important things happen. So, that's awesome. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge Assemblywoman Burke. The entire city council was here for her when she first ran. I don't know if it was 2014, 2015. And, you know, she got elected right off the bat, non-incumbent, and we're very proud of her. We're very grateful for the things that she has done for the city. She was heavily involved in us getting an $8.5 million grant to redo Market Street, which we are in the planning phases right now. I wanted to say that after 50 years of service, public service, three different cities, this one twice, that this moment, this moment in time, is the ultimate of, of my career. I walk in the morning, and the last two days, people stop, roll down their window, they talk about how proud they are to live in Inglewood. They are grateful to the council for, you know, what we've done. But the reality is, is that this is an organization of about 785 people now. And we all, we all in the City of Inglewood family play a role. Without most of us, I can't say all of us, because, you know, we have a few, but most of us, without most of us, we're not where we are today. And it becomes even more important when you get the big things, that you take care of what are the little things that let the residents know that you care. We have worked so hard on renewing the infrastructure over the last eight years, when we saved the money to do it. And, you know, I have to give a lot of kudos to the Public Works Department. I was in the basement with three of the guys coming up this morning, and they were talking about how proud they are to work for the city of Inglewood. And I do like that street pole every day when I walk to the gym. And like I said, 30 people stopping, where usually it's like five, and two of them wanna complain about their driveway hasn't been fixed, but their neighbors was. And we're talking about 30 people. That's a great street pole. And after we took care of the neighborhoods, after we trimmed the trees, after we did the sidewalks, then we started working on Manchester. And then, you know, you have some people say, well, you're only doing that because of the Super Bowl. We're saying, no, we've done everything else. And now, we're about to have 20,000 people a day walking down Manchester, and we don't need them tripping and breaking their ankles and suing the city. When you have people over, you usually clean up the living room. So, we're cleaning up the living room, everybody. And I just wanna tell you, I'm grateful for the city council. I'm grateful for the employees, our executive staff, for making this the time of my life. And with that, we'll close the meeting in the memory of Conchita Cox, who worked for the city for over 21 years in the RSI department. And with that, we adjourn.